Welcome to the City Council Study Session of Tuesday, March 21st, 2023. One Agenda Item. Agenda Item One is Discussion Regarding Operator Agreements for the Young Family Athletic Center and the Senior Center.
Yes.
That out.
All right. Thank you. So, a little bit of background. We've been working on these agreements for quite some time, but of course Norman Forward started long before that in 2015, approved by the voters. It included a senior wellness center and a multi-sport center and an indoor aquatic center. Sales tax selections began in 2016. And over time, we discussed the location of facilities, how they might look. The multi-sport and indoor aquatic facilities were actually combined, and the site selected in 2020. And then we also, in 2021, selected the site for the senior center at the Porter Health Village. We began conducting operator interviews, I think in late 2020, and selected Columbus Corporation as the operator of life act and Healthy Living and Fitness as the operator of the Senior Wellness Center. Council approved MOUs, and I'll get a little bit into that, but I'm going to talk about each agreement separately, although they are very similar. The life act agreement, we started working on this after the MOU in 2021, but if you don't know who Columbus Corporation is, this is just a little bit about them. They operate the Santa Fe Family Life Center. They've been doing that since 2007 in Oklahoma City, provides a lot of different opportunities for activities. You can see those there. In 2020, they served over 9,000 kids in youth sports leagues. Pretty impressive for a year that was interrupted by COVID. Donated over 1,500 hours of facility usage time, partnered with 25 local nonprofits, operated year-round multi-sport adaptive sports programming, and worked to ensure opportunities for underprivileged youth. They donated over $285,000 worth of services in 2020, benefiting about 3,000 or so individuals. So after the interview process, that's who was selected. And council, as I said, approved an MOU with Columbus in 2021. They've been participating in a lot of meetings with the ad hoc committee for the senior, I'm sorry, for the multi-sport and indoor aquatic facility. And then they've been a part of the construction of those projects as well and worked very closely with staff. During all this time, we've been negotiating a lease and management agreement, and we're getting really close, so we wanted to bring that to council. We presented it back to CFOB, the Financial Oversight Board for Norman Forward, in January? Is that right?
Yes.
Time flies. And the ad hoc committee for this project, as well as the senior center project. And so we presented back at CFOB again today, and we promised would go back to them with a final agreement. So these agreements are still marked draft because they are not final yet, but we're getting close. On the life act, we're talking about a specific portion of the multi-sport and indoor aquatic facility. As you all know, we're partnering also with the Norman Regional Health 40 to open up a sports medicine office within the life act. So obviously, Columbus would not be leasing that portion, but everything else. The term of the lease is proposed to be five years. It starts with the effective date of the agreement, and the anniversary of each year would be as of the operational date. Possible extensions of up to three additional five-year terms. The operator will, of course, operate, manage, and maintain the premises. And with life act in particular, they'll bear sole financial responsibility for the startup, management, and operation of the facility. As I said, they've been participating in planning and construction meetings, committee meetings, council meetings when requested. They're going to work to secure any contracts they need with providers or other partners in the facility, hire employees, that kind of thing, with the goal of everything being ready to go as of that final certificate of occupancy date. The city will own the assets, including any additions or modifications the operator may make. They have to make those with city's permission, and that cannot be removed without damage to the property. They may sublease certain portions, but only the city manager's permission, and only if the subleasee or tenant would comply with the contract with the city. And all of that's right in line with the MOU that council had previously approved. They'll be open to members at least 65 hours per week, including at least four consecutive hours on one day each weekend. Here you'll see the list of activities and programming they plan to offer. We do anticipate those will change as the community needs change, and that they'll be responsive to community demands, but you can get an idea of the breadth of the things that will be offered. And then user fees. We don't have those yet. The goal is to have user fees, I think, at the time of adoption of the agreement, but each of these entities is working on their budgets, trying to figure out what that looks like, what the user fees should be in a city where they haven't operated before in a new facility. And so that's, you know, taking some time, but they will provide those to us as we move forward. Type of fees for life act in particular will depend on whether it's league play, court rental, monthly usage fee. We expect several different types of fees. And we expect a sliding scale fee as well, based on income levels and available user fee assistance. You'll see in the agreement that they also are required to develop a scholarship program. So that's something that's really important to make sure that all kids in Norman have access. Any increases in user fees that exceed the annual cap in the agreement, and this is still being negotiated, what that cap might look like, would have to be approved by the city manager after presentation to the park board. Oversight, you'll see this in both agreements where...
Catherine.
Oh, yes.
Can I ask a question? What constitutes member? Open to members?
So they will have, and we don't have the fee schedule yet, but they will have a membership where you could go and use the facility as much as you want on a monthly basis.
Is that, like, similar to what we have with, like, Westwood or something like that?
Yeah. Very similar to that.
Like a membership package.
Right. And then, of course, with leagues and things like that, you'll have league fees like you do with other youth sports. The city manager is required to approve a number of different policies related to the operation and use of the facility under this agreement. You see those listed here, and will require that at the Senior Wellness Center as well. So, use of the premises, prohibition against abuse of any program participants, claims reporting and investigation, rental and booking policies will be really important for the life act, finance and accounting procedures, and then safety procedures. We're also requiring that they provide quarterly and annual reports to the city that details not just the finances, but what services did you offer, how were they used, those kind of things, to keep council informed of how the operation is going. The city, like we do with our other entities like this, will have a right to audit the program, services, and financial records. And then the city manager has rights to ensure the public has access, and of course, the city manager or his or her designated would have access during any hours of operation to be able to just walk in and kind of see how it's going. We've incorporated all of our non-discrimination policies that we've adopted by ordinance. Generally speaking, the operator is responsible for routine maintenance and general repair and supplies, but the city does have responsibility for larger items, capital items. Specifically, this was in the MOU, but it's defined as items valued at over $5,000 with a life expectancy of more than one year. Those would become the city's responsibility. Life act has a number of partnerships, we know, that, you know, just for operations, but obviously, the Norman Regional Health System is a big piece of that. They are going to be the exclusive healthcare partner. You'll see language in the agreement about that, but they're still finalizing those details, so I expect that language to change somewhat, not substantially, but I do think between the hospital and Columbus, they're going to work out something that works for both of them and works also for tournaments that may come in and have their own requirements. We have to make sure we have flexibility for those kind of things.
Excuse me, Catherine. Can you go back to one slide about the $5,000?
Yeah.
So we're responsible for any maintenance, repair, capital improvement above $5,000?
Yes, with a life expectancy of over one year.
All right. Thank you.
We're still working through insurance requirements with life act. We've got very strong insurance requirements, I would say, in the agreement. We're trying to make sure that what is strong is doable with their insurance agents, because they will not own the facility, so we just want to make sure we have it written to something that's actually achievable. So we're working through that language. The city manager or his designated will serve on the operator's board of directors in the next officio capacity, so we'll have some opportunity to see how the overall operation is going from that standpoint.
Just before you move past the slide, the partnerships with other community groups, how are those going, specifically Optimus?
Conversations have been ongoing, I believe. Midway through the process, there was a change in leadership on the board of directors, and the actual executive director of Columbus changed, and so they've had some conversations. That's something we're looking to get more detail on before we bring the final agreement to council. But we do have a provision that any rental or booking policy would be approved by the city. So those are areas where we definitely think it's important to have some detail fleshed out.
Absolutely.
Norman Public Schools, specifically, you'll recall, there are some TIF funds set aside. When we closed out the increment collection for the University of North Park TIF, we set aside, I think, $350,000 to offset costs for Norman Public Schools to be able to use the facility. And so I think at that time, we were thinking it would be about $50,000 a year, so we're keeping a close eye on that.
Okay.
Insurance regulations, you're talking about liability insurance to protect us?
Yes. Yeah. So commercial general liability insurance, property insurance, workers' comp, automobile, I mean, we've got everything in there. It's very strong, but we just want to make sure it's doable, and we'll make adjustments where we need to, but primarily, we want to protect the city. You'll see in there also clauses for termination and how that all works. We're still working through that, and obviously, everyone recognizes that if someone's in default of the agreement, you ought to be able to terminate it. What we're struggling with is discretionary termination. So I had in there some language, and you'll see it in the senior agreement as well, that, you know, would give us an out if we just changed our mind, which is great for us. But we need to recognize, too, that Columbus is going to put in probably about $500,000 into this facility, into the startup cost. And so you can see, they would be more nervous about us just being able to change our mind. So we're trying to work through that and give them some assurance that their investment is protected while still giving us the opportunity to walk away if we need to.
That kind of ties back to a question I had earlier about the five-year terms. How do we land on that number? Because I kind of had the same thoughts when you...
Yeah.
Thinking, if I'm investing a large amount into a building, five years is a whole lot of time to recoup my investment, so...
Those were actually in the MOUs initially. That's, I think, pretty similar to what we have with most of our facilities, where we have other people running programs out of them, typically five-year agreements.
NYSA and Optimus out at Reeves as well. NYSA at Griffin.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're still working through that. I expect this one will come back maybe in the next month or so for a vote of council, so please let me know if you have any questions or have any issues with any of the language. We're still very much tweaking this one, and Columbus is trying to work with the hospital too, to make sure, and we'll have an agreement with the hospital as well, but we want to make sure all of those work together seamlessly and that everyone is working towards the same goal. So please let me know if you have any questions about that. With that, I'll move on to the Senior Wellness Center, which I understand is now called the Adult Wellness and Education Center. Ah. Or ah. Yeah, so it's not catching on just yet, but not quite like the life act. But it does, I think, reflect what the seniors want out of the center. You know, when we first started the senior center debate, it was not so focused on wellness. And as we heard more from the seniors, it became more focused on wellness, and now we've got the education component, and that is a direct result of what the seniors' feedback has been. The operator for this facility is Healthy Living OKC. They're actually creating their own LLC, Healthy Living Norman, for this facility. They operate Oklahoma City's first MAPS-funded senior center. You can see here the kind of activities they provide there. We expect similar activities here. We're still working on that final list. They've been very engaged with the senior community. They already have a Facebook page, and they're gathering feedback, so I think that as we move forward to the final agreement, we'll get a really good idea of what activities will actually be offered and what will be successful there. But you can see their numbers in Oklahoma City, more than 6,500 members in the first two years, an average number of daily visits, 752 people, averaging more than 100 new members each month. Obviously, larger population there, but they've been very successful in getting a lot of memberships and a lot of participation at their center. The council approved an MOU with Healthy Living in 2021, and then we've been negotiating ever since. We think this one will come ahead of the life act agreement. It's really close. Their board is currently considering it and talking through it. They have the latest draft, and so we think we're really close on this one. Lease premises in this case, they're the only operator, they're the only person or entity with any operations in the facility, so it'll be everything on site, including all the improvements, fixtures, and facilities. Again, it's a five-year lease term with the extensions of up to three additional five-year terms. They will provide the daily operation management and maintenance of the facility, and they will bear financial responsibility too, but they get a little bit of city help, because we recognize the Senior Wellness Center or Adult Wellness and Education Center, I think is not going to be a type of facility that hosts events and brings in a ton of money. You're dealing with people that are often on fixed incomes, you're not hosting league tournaments and things like that typically. So they had asked for some city contributions. We've got in here right now a maximum of $125,000 per year, and that would include utility assistance. You can see that would decrease over the first three years, janitorial services for the first three years, lawn and landscaping services during the first five years, and pool maintenance for the first five years, and then fitness equipment. And that's just to kind of give them a runway to get started, build their membership, and become self-sufficient in subsequent terms. We're talking now about whether or not we want to upfront some of this cost to them prior to the facility opening, so that may end up in the final agreement. We're still working on that, and that's just recognizing they need to hire staff and get things in place, supplies and things like that, in place before it opens and before they've collected a single membership fee. So we're working through that.
Councilmember Pika.
Would that maintenance obligation be carried forward in subsequent lease terms?
No.
Okay, so just for this first?
Just for the first five years, yeah.
There would be an expectation, though, in writing, that a certain standard would have to be maintained once the city isn't contributing to those things anymore?
Yes, we have provisions in both agreements where, at the date the facility opens, there's an inventory of what's there, what condition it's in, how it's supposed to be maintained, and what warranties exist to ensure that those things are maintained according to specifications and manuals or whatever it is that is mentioned on that particular piece of equipment. But yes, we've got all of that being provided at the beginning, and that's part of an annual report as well.
Just a question, since we removed senior from the name of it, does that open it to a wider membership age range, or are we still having different requirements?
I think the targeted audience will still be the same. I don't know that...
I'm an adult.
Do I get it out? You know, like...
It's a good question. So their target audience is still 15 and up.
Okay.
Seniors, especially your younger or active adults.
Elder millennial.
Whatever you want to refer to them as. They have a little bit of a hindrance, so if you're a 50-year-old or 55-year-old, they're finding up in Oklahoma City, they're having a tougher time drawing those younger active adults being referenced as a senior, because they don't want to be going to what is known as a traditional senior center. And this is not a traditional senior center.
I would go.
It's going to have a lot of different activities involved in it, so...
Okay. There we go. So like life act in Columbus, Healthy Living has been participating in the planning and construction meetings and committee and council meetings when requested, and that will follow through. They're working to secure contracts, hire employees, that kind of thing by opening date. They will probably have a lot of agreements with people to come in and provide services, rather than have them be full-time employees. And they may use some of their positions, use volunteers for some of their positions initially, but they would have to follow the same employee policies and go through background checks and all that kind of thing. The city will own the assets, including, again, additions or modifications constructed by the operator with our permission, as long as they can't be removed without damaging our property. They can sublease, but only with city manager permission, and if the subleasee or tenant complies with our contract.
Did you mean Councilmember Grant? Okay, Councilmember Grant.
What kind of entities would sublease? What would those look like?
You know, Jason may be able to speak to it better than I can, but they have an art space, so it could be art instruction, you know, subleasing that space. It could be fitness components, things like that.
So like a yoga instructor or an art teacher?
Yeah, most of that, I would think, would be contract health, but there's also three wellness rooms that you can kind of compare to a small exam room or something like that. So there's been talks of anything from health exams, vaccinations, mental health, manicures, pedicures, physical therapy, a number of things can go on in these exam rooms, and those are the type of things that they're talking about with possibility of sublease.
It's kind of like a work share room, like different entities would have time slots they've leased it, or would they lease it for like a year, that room?
It'd probably just be kind of an open space where you can lease it for a small period of time. I wouldn't imagine they would want a long-term lease in those small rooms, but that would be up to them, according to this.
Councilmember Holman, did you have a question?
That was the same question.
That was a question.
Mine's easy. What's the opening date?
For the adult wellness is...
Yeah.
It's a good question.
It's an easy way, easy room, right?
I know. So construction will be done by the end of August for adult wellness, and at life act, it'll be done by the end of October, and we need about 45 to 60 days to knock out punch lists and get everybody moved in. Life act might be a little bit more complicated than adult wellness, because we have two entities moving into that one, so...
Then end of August?
End of August for adult wellness.
Construction, yeah.
They're coming quick. Let's just...
Yeah. It's really exciting. I feel like we've been talking about these forever.
I know.
Like the life act, it'll be open to members at least 65 hours per week, same thing, including at least four consecutive hours on one weekend day. You can see here the exhibit B referenced. I think this is from the MOU, but I expect the final exhibit to be pretty similar, unless they've made some alterations based on their contact with the senior community. And we want them to adapt their programming and service offerings based on the needs of the users, and so we expect that will be changing at some point. User fees will go towards operations. We've got the sliding scale fee language in this as well, and any changes to user fees must be approved by the city manager.
Councilmember Holman.
So about the members, again, regarding both facilities, you don't have to have a membership that you pay an annual fee for to use them, right? Somebody could, like Westwood, you can show up at the gate and pay for a day pass and...
That would be all, and they're supposed to be exhibits along with these, but that would be all in their information they provide. There probably will be day passes. Life act, they're, you know, if you're playing in league, you don't have to be a member to come in there and play, but the membership base is probably more relevant to the adult wellness than it is over at the life act.
People could go to the life act and go swimming in the pool without having to buy a six-month membership.
Correct.
They could pay just like they paid to go swim at Westwood.
Correct.
And with the senior center, you're saying it'd probably be more focused around trying to build memberships?
Yes.
Someone could use the seniors for the adult wellness education center?
That would...
With...
It's a mouthful, right?
They could just walk in off the street if...
And there'd probably be more commonly referred as like Healthy Living Norman. When you talk to one in Oklahoma City, you know, on the outside of their building, I believe it's Senior Wellness and Health Building, MAP4 Project.
True.
That's just what's on the outside of the building. But yeah, that would be kind of up to them.
Like I'm coming here to play a game of chess with my buddy, I'm not a member. I'm visiting from out of town, visiting my friend.
He's asking for a free pass. You guys can give free passes up.
The day pass or whatever.
Day pass and Westwood, I mean, this is all things we can suggest to them, but there's also, out of Westwood, you have so many, if you're a member, you have so many guest passes.
Again, remember that.
That's a question we probably need to ask them and figure that out.
Yeah, we haven't gotten those user fees from them yet, but I anticipate that will answer a lot of these questions once we have those, but we'll certainly bring that up.
Make sure that they're as accessible as possible.
Right, yeah. Same thing for oversight, all of the same policies. We're expecting them to produce those and to have the city review them and approve them. Same thing for reporting, quarterly and annual reports. We don't just care about the money, but what services are being offered and are they being utilized? And then, of course, the audit right and the right to access. Same thing here, non-discrimination policies are in compliance with our city's civil rights ordinance. Routine maintenance was the operator's responsibility, supplies, those kind of things, and then we're responsible for capital items. So I have something copied from one slide. So we're still working through the insurance on this one, too. Again, we just want to make sure that what we're actually putting in there is something that's achievable and working through those termination clauses. I think we're more final here with Healthy Living, because the city is contributing. There's not the same amount of upfront investment from Healthy Living that life act will have, and so discretionary termination has not been an issue thus far. So I expect that to change, maybe slight modifications, but it has not been a substantive issue thus far, so... With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have. Any additional questions? We'll be bringing this back. I'm hoping the senior wellness or adult wellness agreement could come in April, maybe even the first meeting. It just depends on when their board is able to act on that formally. And then life act and Norman Regional's agreement, I want to bring those at the same time, probably late April at this point, but if we get them done April 11th, that'll happen there.
It's exciting to have this happening and to see this happening in Norman. Jason and I have talked or spoken many times about the thing that it doesn't matter if you're seven or 70, there's something to do in this town that has to do with getting out and doing stuff. Councilmember Tortrelli.
You know, I've been asked this question before today's meeting, but $125,000 a year, could we just hire another Jason Alston to run these projects? So to refresh our memories, we started this conversation, so why didn't we just hire somebody from the city to run this and go out to the city and go to a nonprofit that's not here in Norman, for example, but in Oklahoma City?
The $125,000 is what we're taking from our senior center cost center right now and just transferring that over there, and like we said, that's just a five-year run of usage of that money. We can revisit that in, you know, another five years, but to answer your question, it's going to take a lot more staff to run this one. We would think it would be somewhere between four to five full-time people, not just one person in there. You're talking about anywhere between, what we're hoping realistically, between 2,500 to 5,000, membership is what they're shooting for, and you would need somebody there at least 68 hours a week to run all this stuff. And right now, we're running a senior center at 40 hours a week with one person, and there's only about 30 visitors a day going over there. Yes.
All right, the other question I have is, I've been asked this twice this week, is, you know, has a senior center, there are a lot of seniors upset that they're going to have to pay in a fee to go and participate in services. I know we talked about this about a year ago, just about, can you refresh or remember why we're charging seniors anything?
It's expanded. Well, first of all, we do charge at the current senior center. It's not a required fee, but this is a fee that I believe that's left over from the mid-'90s, hasn't been changed, and we haven't asked for it to be changed, but it's $30 a year to participate over there voluntarily. That doesn't get put in very much, but this is expanded services. We're having swimming pools, workout equipment, so exam rooms, organized arts and crafts. There's a lot of things that go along with this building that was requested, because what they saw going on in Oklahoma City that's not going on in our current facility. This is going to be run just like, when the MAPS wellness program started happening, what happened, we were trying to put a senior center in one of our current libraries or the current library over here, and... and they saw what was going on in Oklahoma City or what was promised in Oklahoma City, and they wanted their own standalone facility. So this is kind of what the senior groups were pushing for. They're kind of getting what they wanted. Now there's going to be, along with the $35 a month that we think it's going to be costs, there's also going to be different scholarship opportunities. There's some healthcare providers that offer this along with their regular insurance. There's going to be opportunities. We are requiring a sliding scale, so not necessarily, just depending on what your income level is, does not necessarily mean you're going to have to pay $35 a person or $50 a couple. It's going to slide, and there's going to be a lot of expanded services offered. Swimming pool, arts and crafts, wellness, fitness classes. That's all going to be all-inclusive in that cost.
And we do charge, if you want to go play at Westwood, you pay to play at Westwood. If you want to go in the water slides at Westwood, you pay to go to the water slides. So it's not new, and it's just the way to help make sure we're keeping the equipment current and maintained up to the standards that our community's grown to expect. It would be wonderful if we could provide all those services for free. We just don't have enough capacity in that general fund revenue stream yet.
All right, thank you, Mr. Olson. Thank you, Senator Manz.
It's about the same as what my wife pays at Y. It's about $35.
Yeah, that's what I was about to ask with the membership at the Y is.
I don't pay much attention to if she wants to belong, she can do it.
Wise man.
That's right, I don't know, yeah.
And is there, speaking of that membership, Jason, there's a program my mother-in-law was telling me about called Silver Sneakers through Medicare. I don't know if that, if we can program that into this, but if you got, if you're Medicare eligible, you can get access to...
There's an opportunity for that. I think there's some stringent requirements to go along with that, but they are working towards Silver Sneakers, and that was kind of one of the things we're hitting on, and some insurance companies do provide wellness opportunities through the insurance, so. And Healthy Living is going to explore all those, and they're going to have people there. When you go sign up, when you sign up, they're going to, it's basically like, you know, any other opportunity. They're going to try to make sure that you get in there for as affordable as possible. They're going to work with you to find these avenues, especially if you go up front and say, the certified dollars might be a little steep, I can't afford it, you know, work with me. They're going to work with you to try to find a way to get in there. This, much like we do at Westwood, we have scholarship opportunities out there as well.
I know they're just glad to have it.
It's going to be state-of-the-art, and it's going to be very nice.
Yeah.
Well, what about like Sooner Care, Medicaid, Medicare? Will that, can that cover any of this? Because the biggest thing I've heard is it's going from $30 a year to $35 a month. So I've had a lot of people concerned about that. So any way that we can actually help them pay for it.
That's something that Healthy Living will need to work out if they can work with those insurance companies.
Is there a way that we can cap what they charge?
We've got it in here where any increase in membership fees would have to be approved, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this, I understand that we do charge for other things, and we do need to recruit something for the expanded services, but it is something I would be, I would personally be supportive of considering, maybe not fully subsidizing, but to a certain extent, as time goes by, to make sure that it does stay affordable for seniors on fixed incomes and things like that. Because $35 a month times 2,500, the low end that you've mentioned, is 87,500 a year, and that's a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money in the city's budget. And just as an example, we're doubling our contribution to, well, we might be, the whole council has to weigh in, but the Finance Committee moved it forward to double the contribution we're making to the Firehouse Arts Center from 60,000 to 120,000 a year, so. You know, and it's something I support, but I would also probably support in the future, considering that same type of help towards this specific facility, given the nature of the residents that would be using it, so.
I'd agree.
Maybe not something we have to decide right now, but something I would be, I would be interested in in the future, especially if it meant keeping that cost down.
Councilmember Tortorella.
A couple more questions for you on the legal side here. When we give these sliding scales and we give memberships based on income, are they subject to open records requests if anybody asks to see if we're actually doing that?
No, I don't think so. We do that on utility bills now, and there's provisions that exempt certain financial information and personal information from open records. Healthy Living wouldn't necessarily have to follow the Open Records Act because they're not a public entity like we are, but...
All right. The other question, I think it's the last question for me, is that you threw a lot of numbers out there. Did you mention $500,000 in startup costs?
For YFAC, not senior center.
Okay, for YFAC.
Yeah.
Can you break down those costs or what's...
Those are on the operator's side, not on our side.
Yeah, not our side.
So that's their responsibility then, right?
That's what they estimated their startup cost to be. We haven't exactly got a breakdown from them.
What was that?
That's what they estimate their startup cost to be to put it, because they're responsible for putting in computers and paying for the hardware to go along with those computers, putting the bodies in there, and there's certain supplies, anything that's under $5,000, they're responsible for putting in. So they're thinking about a half million dollar startup cost.
Half million dollars, the $125,000 a year, does that count towards that subsidy? Towards that $500,000?
The $125,000 a year isn't for YFAC. It's just for the senior center because we know they're not going to have the money-making events that the YFAC can have, and so they'll need more support.
Okay, good, thank you.
And we would like to share that the seniors that participated in the whole concept and the evolution of what the senior center was going to be to what the new adult wellness and education center is, these were driven by our senior community members. They wanted more services, and they wanted that membership to ensure that they had access to, you know, great equipment and great classes and programming. So, yeah, none of these are concepts that staff members or operators put forth. These are the concepts that were promoted by our community members who voted yes on Norman Forward so they could get these wonderful facilities. So, great to facilitate it, and our committees that participated in both YFAC and the adult wellness program, they are, they are the rudder. They're what you see is coming from them.
Does Oklahoma City's senior center charge? Do they have a fee, and do we know what their fee is?
Yeah, so this is the same group that runs out of the senior wellness center number one. So they're going to duplicate fees. As far as what we understand, it might be different when they propose, but it's $35 for an individual, $50 for a married couple.
So that is in line with what they're already doing?
Is that married or household?
Household.
Look, it's 2021 or 2023. I was saying 21st century.
We're still living in those days.
Yes, time stopped. Totally fine, yes. Nothing, no strokes here.
I have one more.
See, I need a senior wellness center.
So, you know, do we subsidize the YMCA, the city? Because it seems like, look, I love competition, but it seems like this might directly impact some of the Y's programs if we're going to subsidize another agency to come in and run similar programs here. Have you got any feedback from the Y Board? The Finance Committee, the board that runs that program?
No.
There's a difference in the services between what the Y has and what the adult wellness center is going to do. The adult wellness center is more holistic. You can go to a pool and swim and do stuff, and then get out and play chess or go play, do art or do something else. It's not solely exercise set. It's not a gym.
No, no, I get that, you know, because I have a Y membership. I don't go to it a lot, but I do see a lot of old folks go in the pool. They get up to the Y, they go play chess and hang out in the sauna, but I'm just saying, look, it was asked last week prior to this conversation here that, you know, are we, you know, the competition is there, but are we going to take any services away? And I know there's a difference in services in what we're offering now and what the Y offers now, but I just thought I'd ask that question.
Sure.
But thank you. But I do see a lot of old folks play chess at the Y, too, so.
I'll also mention that the Y is all ages.
But also, this is all ages, too, just, you know, anyone can come and do this.
Senior or the adult wellness.
Yeah, didn't we just have that conversation that anyone can come and partake?
Fifty plus. Fifty plus.
That's why you're... Fifteen up for the senior, so you can, there are some duplications of services if you're 15 and up for the senior center. We don't, this is my opinion, the YFAC is more aimed at leagues and, you know, tournaments, so not necessarily the same thing that what the Y does.
And it's voter-approved, so we are invested in it, so it makes sense.
And Mr. Olson, will we be having a conversation at some point in the not-too-distant future about how we will be able to utilize the existing senior center and what I've heard as the former Carnegie Library, and there's debate as to whether or not it really is a Carnegie Library, but the existing senior center?
So eventually, we'll put out an RFP, and we'll work with user groups that's around the city. It's going to be open for anybody to put in a proposal, so any user groups or people that offer public service, public benefit can put in our proposal, and we'll put together a committee, probably made up of part board members and staff, to review those RFPs, and then eventually that will make it back to part board. Once they recommend it, we'll bring it to council for a contract approval.
Art generator. That's what we need down there.
Yes, man, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're good. Am I making this up, but at the YFAC, weren't we going to have like a standalone, like Adidas thing? Was that part of Trae Young's thing?
So we...
You should ask.
Oh.
Rayford was in town for an extended period, a couple weeks ago, and we did meet with some people from Adidas, and they verbally committed to put in an Adidas store, and that will be more than likely operated by the hospital with contributions being split between the Young Family Athletics or Young Family Foundation and the Hospital Foundation.
Oh, okay.
Excellent presentation, both of you guys. Thank you.
I was going to ask, what are the public art options on each of these? Like, will there be public art at both facilities?
Yeah, because they're both Norman Forward projects. They did have the 1% art budget, and so you probably can describe it better than me, but the art piece at YFAC is a combination of...
Basketball, volleyball.
Yeah, it's a carbon fiber steel structure that has a swimmer, a volleyball player, and a basketball player, which is the outline of Trae Young shooting a three-pointer, which is kind of cool. They're different colors, all representing the Norman colors, and they'll be in the circle drive right there in front of the YFAC. The senior, which has not come to y'all just yet, is a kind of a multi-color reflective stained glass, not really thing. It's going to be a huge flyer, flower. I'm a parks guy, but... It is a transparent flower that, when sun shines to it, it will reflect different colors onto the ground.
Mention the tree, reusing of the tree?
Of course, there was a large cypress that was out there in the middle of the parking lot and at the senior center, and we cut that down, saved the wood, actually cut it into slabs, and we're going to actually use that on top of the coffee bar that's right inside of the, right in front of the kitchen area, inside the...
I wanted to save it, but it's right in the middle of the building.
Yeah, we would have had to sacrifice quite a few parking spots.
It was the only tree on the whole property.
Yeah. We did have our forester before. They cut it down. He went and looked at it, and he said the lifespan of that tree is not that long. I will let you know that, the parking lot was kind of sucking the life out of it. Any trees that you put next to asphalt don't last that long, just to let you know. Yeah, so they cut it down, and we are going to use it inside the center, and it's pretty cool, and we did the exact same thing at the library, so.
Anything else?
Thank you.